Good afternoon, I'm waiting to answer from the Lexington League Women Voters and it's a pleasure to be able to come in and participate in your candidates forum. I will run over the rules again just quickly so that we all remember that we have an uncontested race as you know for moderator, campaign moderator. So we'll hear from Alice Moore first briefly and then we'll go into the contested races. And on each of those, each candidate will have a one-minute statement. And when all of the candidates have made their one-minute statements, then we will entertain questions from the audience.
I'm reading the instructions here.
All right, so take apart two-minute statements for the contested candidates. When they make those statements, then there will be questions from the audience. And the way I think we'll handle those is that I will just assign the questions in rotation. So if you rise with a question presumably for all three candidates for this office or that office, it will be initially directed to the next candidate in rotation. But if another candidate has a particular comment to make on that question, they can briefly ask to be heard as well. But because you are fortunate in all these races, you have lots of candidates and we can't allow too much time. So everybody will be very brief to the point. All right, these are your candidates for school committee. We have two openings for three-year service. There are three people running, but we have two of them here today. The person who is running who's not here is John O'Brien, but we have Anthony Mullen and Carol Lewis. And they each have got a two-minute statement, so let's start with Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, good afternoon, it's great to be here. I'm Carol Lewis and I am running for reelection to Westwood School Committee. Let me start by just telling you a little bit about myself. I'm a graduate of Hamilton College. I have a J.D. from Suffolk University Law School and an advanced law degree at Boston University Law School in finance and banking. For many years, I worked at the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston where I was a bank examiner, but largely focused on educating consumers as well as bankers and other regulators about financial laws and protections. Most recently, I am now Vice President and Compliance Officer at Debt and Savings Management. And the tide that's always found all of my, all of the points of my career has been education and advocacy. My husband Warren and I moved to Westwood 14 years ago. We have two sons, Ben and Ryan, and they have been attending Westwood Public Schools since kindergarten. I started attending school committee meetings regularly in 2005 when my oldest was in kindergarten. And I quickly became a source of information for other parents. I decided to provide my financial, legal, and advocacy skills with my knowledge of schools and I ran for school committee and was elected in 2010. I've been an active member of the school committee for the past six years, working hard to provide the best possible educational experience for all Westwood children. Let me give you just three examples. First, I continually reach out to and communicate with parents from kindergarten, from preschool actually, to high school, to understand their concerns, to field their questions. And I've helped many to navigate the system to address specific needs of their child. Second, as the school committee liaison and parent, I'm actively involved to support the emotional and physical wellbeing of all of our children here in Westwood as I work with you through family services as a dedicated member of Westwood Cares. And third, I also serve right now on the Science, Technology, and Engineering Task Force with teachers and principals across the district. And this is a long-term project as we work to expand and improve our science curriculum from kindergarten to 12th grade. I look forward to your questions, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tony Mullen, real name Anthony Mullen. I live on Pop Street. And I'd like to, before I get started, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum. I think it's a great opportunity and I'd like to thank all of you for coming out to hear it today. Many of people who are here today know me first as a dad of two amazing girls. My oldest girl, her name is Katie, and she attends Thurston Middle School in sixth grade. My youngest daughter Maggie is in second grade and she attends Martha Jones. Many others of you know me through my involvement in youth sports. I'm a member of the Westwood Soccer Board. I've also coached basketball, soccer, and helped out a lot of other things in town. And I've also been active in the classroom as a room parent as well as volunteer in the schools. Just a little bit about my background. I moved to the Boston area about 24 years ago from the Midwest to attend Boston College. I then worked for a few years and I got my MBA from MIT Sloan. I have 15 years' business experience since then. Six years at the Boston Consulting Group advising companies and nonprofits on long-term strategy. And then most recently, six years with Biogen and Cambridge working in human resources. If elected, I have three priorities. My first priority is, and thanks for Carol for mentioning it, is addressing the emotional mental health needs of the whole child, which is a bit of a challenge for many to be known today as you. My second priority is increasing engagement between the school committee and parents who leverage new technologies, which would add to my HR background. My final priority is I think we need to build a real long-term vision of where our schools are headed, both in the academic side as well as the capital plans. And there I could leverage my experience at Boston Consulting Group. So let me just close with my philosophy of life. It is what I've been doing the last several weeks campaigning. My philosophy is simple: listen, listen, and listen more. My belief as a school committee member, what's most important is I can choose my priorities but also listen to all residents and parents. Thank you.
All right, questions for the school committee candidates? Let's go in to the floor class. Loudly.
I understand presently there are no committee members who have children in Westwood Public Schools. Is that...
May I do?
You can start.
So that's not true. And I speak just for my sons today. So I do have two children in the Westwood Public Schools. And as I said earlier, they came through kindergarten. I have two daughters, they're in the high school. And my guess is the question comes up because maybe folks wonder how do parents, how do school committee members who don't have children in all of the grades remain connected? And that's a large part of what I do as a school committee member. So let me give you an example. I right now, I volunteered to be, as a school committee member, I believe, school committee representative at the Integrate preschool, at the Martha Jones Elementary School, and at the high school. And the reason I did that, the reason I asked for those three spots was to ensure that I understand the priorities and concerns at different levels of the schools. So that's just one example.
Yeah, just briefly on that. So part of the reason, so Carol, right, there's five members of the school committee. Two of them I believe have children in the high school. The three other no longer have children in the schools. And part of the reason I'm running is I think at least one member should have a child and he lived elementary or middle school. And I do appreciate you can get the views of those situations other ways. But I think it's important to actually understand when your daughter comes home and is talking about what's going on at the dinner table, what happens in second or sixth grade, it's really an important perspective to bear.
And so your children are...
One is in Martha Jones, is in second grade, and the other is a sixth grader, I personally.
Okay, other questions for the school committee? Of course.
Yes, there's a dialogue in the neighborhoods about school consolidation. And so I just wanted to know what your position was on that topic.
So Mr. Mullen, you go first.
Sure. Okay. Fun question. So I'm new and this is the person I'm running. So what I can say is this, I've, you don't have to knock on a lot of doors in the Sheen Committee in particular. And I would say by a margin of 10 to 1, people are not supportive of the current, the thing that was ordered on last June to go from five elementary schools. And so I don't have 100%, you know, what the view is. But I, as a committee member, I do not think 90% of debt of the community does not support something. I would have a part-time advocate for that. That being said, we do need to address the long-term capital needs of the schools. As I like to say, and that includes the middle school. Because I'd like to tell people, the original part of the middle school was built when FDR was president. Okay, so my comparison, that's three years before the police station was built. So we already at some point have to address the long-term capital needs of the schools. And I think that's where I could leverage my experience at the Boston Consulting Group.
So this is a timely question, a good question. And let me just tell you, this is a two-step process. So the first part of the process was for us to assess the needs of the schools. The educational needs and the structural needs. So we hired a firm. The firm came out, they brought us, they came up with proposals, options for us, several of them. So we as a school committee over several months discussed these options in our public meetings. And what we came down to as of June, we didn't vote to go with one particular proposal, but we did come up with a bit of a consensus, we like this proposal, but this is just the beginning. This is just step one of the process. Step two of the process is to go out to the community. Because first off, we can't do anything without the community behind us. We won't do anything without the community behind us. And if we need funding for this very, very expensive project, we are going to need the community behind us. So for the sake of dear, now you all know, we are about to start the second part of this process in a formal way. Coming this spring, I know it doesn't look like spring, but actually in spring, we are going to have a public forum and we will invite all of Westwood residents to join us. We will have the firm there providing us with options. We have additional options and we're going to create a dialogue. That is going to be the beginning of the dialogue to determine what Westwood wants, what our vision is for our, specifically we're focused on right now, the elementary schools. Thank you.
Okay, another question. Ms. Grant.
Yes, and I know this is probably stuff for that forum, but I'm wondering if you have any, what do you think is the cause of, so there's declining enrollments and the risk of the schools having more and more same-tem classes and that brings up a whole issue. So one question, so I mean, what is your sense of the cause? What could we do to solve the root cause of things? And I've got that question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm on it. So the, I'm not sure that there's a cause except that we have, if we focus on the elementary schools, we have very, very old neighborhoods. And we live in a very, in a small town, roughly 14,000, 15,000 people. And it's very rare to have a school, a town of this size to have that many elementary schools. So that's number one. But that's not a reason to tear down or consolidate. And we don't know that we're doing that. The reason that we're looking at this is because something has to be done in our schools. We want to have a plan for the future. We want to plan out 50 years from now. We want to ensure that this community rolls on and that when people come in 50 years from now, we have schools that, great schools, not just academically also, but structurally, that will survive and that will accommodate the new learning needs and education, the way that we teach in the schools, technology and so forth. So I'm not sure that there's a cause. Yes, enrollment is down. The point of thinking about consolidation always not about enrollment, it's about being physically responsible as well. So right now, we run five elementary schools in a small town. It's very expensive to do that. So one of the possibilities is rather than spending a lot of money fixing up five, perhaps one of the options was, we have three schools of equal size that accommodate the structural needs, the class size needs, and the educational needs in the community.
Please go.
Yeah, I don't have a lot more. I think it's a study that is done, although the demographic trends. I assume those are, you know, I can't, if they were experts, then they can speak better to the, you know, the demographics of Westwood than I could. But the demographics, they can say that enrollment will be going down when that's 50 years. What the cause of that, I'm not exactly sure. You know, the other thing I'll say, I think it's important, I thought, you know, that we start having this dialogue about long-term capital needs sooner rather than later. There was actually a meeting that was supposed to be held in February. There was a snowstorm that was postponed. And I sort of hope that superintendent and school committee would actually get that meeting scheduled for April 26th because I think it's important that voters can start engaging about what the plans are sooner rather than later.
Okay, Ms. Lane here, then there's another.
Thanks. I was just curious if there were to be, I'm not sure where you are in the process, if there were to be a consolidation of elementary schools, do you have a sense of where you think would be the best site? It's part A. Part B is what other boards in town would you need to work with to get the best site? And part C is how long would one of our elementary, the longest elementary school ride for one of our children if there's a consolidated elementary school?
So we are at such early stages that these are all wonderful questions that you should bring to the forum that we'll have this spring. These are all, these are concerns that we all have. We will tell you that the site, so we don't know. There will be, I believe, 10 proposals, seven to 10 proposals, so we can talk about sites there. And we understand that as a concern. There are parents who moved here for neighborhood schools. So we want to hear about that. If that's a top priority for people, we want to know. Because that would change our focus as to which proposal we might go with. In terms of, I'm not sure if you asked about, but this project is at least five to seven years down the road. We have, this is big money. We will have to get state funding. In order to get state funding, we have to have the town behind us. We have to have a very specific proposal in place. So that's going to take time. This dialogue, when I say we have informed in May or June, that's not the end-all. There will, we have to have, so you have a part of your question. We have to have communication with all of the boards in town. So this is not up to the school committee to just put the stamp on and say, this is what we're doing. Actually, we would never do that and if that's not the way to...
Mr. Mullen.
Yeah, I think Carol, I just echo what Carol said. I think the other thing this brings to bear, that I think was one of my key priorities, is we need to think of new ways to engage with the community. And how do we get them involved? Because, look, working parents are busy. They've got sometimes two-fold working parents, you've got single-parent households. You've got a lot of families in this town caring for the elder parent. So we need to think about new technologies and new ways to engage with residents. So Westcat is a great opportunity, but we should be thinking about things like podcasts, which you can put audio, once you put audio things on your MPD player, come to work and hear about what's going on in the school committee. So I think this is, you know, my view is that we are already in the process of what Carol said. But I think, you know, if I was elected, I want to think about how do we engage the community in maybe a different way than we engaged them before.
Okay, there was a question here.
Yes. Given the fact that it's going to impact our children much more than us, do you think the schools are doing enough to teach them about climate change and what they can do in the future when they're dealt to help the purpose?
I'll get that one first and then over to the booth.
So I know, well, so I know from talking to my, both my second grader and my sixth grader, they're certainly talking about it and learning about the schools. My daughter, you know, is actually asking me questions about recycling and actually gives me a hard time if I put something in the wrong bucket. So they're certainly talking about recycling and, you know, climate change. You know, can they, can they talk about it more? You know, certainly. But I'm just glad they're actually, they're talking about it. And both my children know about it and know about it in schools.
Thanks for bringing that question up, Kim, because that gives me the opportunity to talk about what we're doing right now in our science program. So I mentioned earlier that I am the school committee liaison to this committee right now, the Science, Technology, and Engineering Review. And this is an amazing team of dedicated teachers and principals in the English community. And we gather together and address, or we're not addressing, well, we are addressing, but we're assessing is what I meant to say, the curriculum that we have, K to 12. And those are the types of subjects, you know, we want to be current, 21st century. We're talking about how to teach, but also the various subjects that we're teaching within our science curriculum. So I would say that that is a part of the plan as we evaluate and expand and improve our science curriculum here in Westwood and K to 12.
There was a question back here and then we'll come up with that, the lady in the background.
Thanks. Back to the school consolidation. That was a great question about the climate change. I actually grew up in this town and have just brought my daughter back. And because I grew up here, I know this is not the first time that Westwood is facing decline in enrollment. And as I recall, when I was a kid, I got shifted from the Deerfield over to the Sheen, but then like the Deerfield was rented out to a private school. So I'm just curious if the current school committee has kind of looked into options like that or kind of looked back to what was done before to see if there's other options than school consolidation or that kind of thing.
So let me see if I can answer for you. So I hate really when we call it school consolidation because we're not really sure if we're consolidating schools. No offense to you, but it's really a review of, an assessment of our schools. And it's starting, we've done this before, we've had other assessments, but because we're concerned structurally about schools, because they're old. And we're concerned because there are so many new ways in which we teach that if you look at some of our really, the older schools, the classrooms are not necessarily set up right. And these were all things that were assessed by this professional firm because that's not our expertise, but we relied on that. So we had, we're looking at this from a structural point of view to determine what we can do to address the needs of the schools. Have I answered your question?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, there is a lot more to add. I think it just goes back to Carol's point, we are pretty early in the process. I think we need a lot of community engagements. And I'll say it again, 90% of the community don't want to, you know, consolidate, build a school. I'm not going to be born because that's not going to listen to me, we are elected officials.
Can I just add one quick thing on that? I want you to go to understand though that this is, this is very, very important to the town and doing nothing is not an option. Because if we don't do anything, then we, I would say as a school committee, are missing our obligation and commitment to the town. So something has to be done. And again, I would encourage all of you to reach out to your school committee members, to come to the forums, to read the papers, to look online, to look at the school website, to look at the tweets and so forth. Stay involved as you are today. I put you to the choir because you're here. But it's so important because this, we have to do something.
Yeah, there's one other thing I have to add. We need to consider the Thurston Middle School in that conversation because if any of you haven't been in there recently, just take a walk through it if you're in the sixth grade section. It's my suggestion.
There was a question up here. Okay, the gentleman in blue.
Hello, my name is Joe Pravater. I live at 16 Dean Street and I'm a lifelong resident in this town. The two of you put your hands on this third rail when you talked about consolidation. I have a couple of points I'd like to make, that'll be the first one. First of all, let me give you some background.
Mr. Mullen, sir, do you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good.
I had the wonderful privilege of being on the high school review committee when we rebuilt the high school. I for one, 100% oppose to the school consolidation plan. We've always endorsed neighborhood schools. The town of Denham has endorsed neighborhood schools. The town of Norwood has endorsed neighborhood schools. I just want to be perfectly clear. I'll go to the meetings. I want you to understand as a lifelong resident, I will always support neighborhood schools, period. The second thing is, what will you do, the two of you do? And Carol must speak specifically about Cynthia on the finance committee. I've never seen such dichotomy or such ill feelings between the municipal side and the school side of the ledger on the finance committee areas. And I'd like to know what you two as candidates would do to address that issue because it's abundantly obvious to those who go to the meetings. Thank you.
So, I appreciate your passion, I really do. And I know there are many people in this town who appreciate the neighborhood schools. And that's why again, we as a school committee are not going to come to a conclusion that consolidation is the best scenario. But I understand too that we also have to be physically responsible in this town. And if we can't do nothing and if the price tag is so high that we have to find a way to address the needs of our schools, we have to be open-minded about what our options are. Okay? In terms of working with the other boards in town, we have, are very fortunate in that if you've been to other town meetings in other towns and I hear stories, we actually get along quite well in this town. We work together, oftentimes we have competing priorities. That's just what happened. And we all think that our own priorities, and I'm talking about the different boards, are the most important. And it's important for us to continue to collaborate and communicate about what our priorities are. And we did that this year. Sure, was there some contention? Absolutely. But I want to tell you that we came together, that the selectmen went to bat for us. We were able to get the funding we needed to fulfill the needs in our schools and we appreciate the way they have worked with us and the way the other boards have worked with us as well. So I look forward to continuing to work with people and the other boards as I go forward in my role on the school committee. Thank you.
So thank you for that question. So I'm new to this, I've never run for office before. And part of the reason I am running, it's not so much whether I get for or against school consolidation, I think what's amiss is we need to listen. And I'm going to keep on reiterating that. I think the important thing as a school committee member that I will bring, and part of the reason I'm running, is listening to all of the voters as well as listening to all around the community. The other thing is, I was at the finance committee meeting and I did find it a bit disappointing that we kind of got into that point. Part of the reason, part of the background I have is in HR, bringing people together. I hope that we can actually work together with, you know, the municipal and the school committee and it doesn't have to get into a pitched battle of us versus them. Like for Westwood, for Westwood, everyone loves these schools. Everyone loves this community. It's, you know, it's, it's talk and, you know, have a good conversation. And I'm hearing that from everyone, from, you know, from the grandparents to the parents to the people who don't have children yet. So I think if we can work together, and I think we can work together, I think that is, you know, be better.
Okay, what do you think?
I want to turn to the high school because my children went through the schools when this woman went through and it was a, the population continued to decline and was very small, but by the children grouping in schools that allowed there to be several classrooms and groupings of ability, which was wonderful. So there was a wonderful education at the end of that ride. But I have a concern, no one is talking about what happens when the school population goes through the system. When you go through the middle school and then the high school and you're talking about the classes that can be offered. I know that my children benefited because the classes coming up were much larger. So the classes and the teachers were not cut, they were kept in place. But I am concerned as to what will happen when this small number filters through and we have high achievements at our middle and high school. So we haven't talked much about that this afternoon. Can you address it, Tony?
So I guess the question is, once the enrollment of high school goes down, how will you keep this going? Well, so I guess, I guess it's two parts, I guess three parts. One is, the good news is, you know, thanks to Carol and the committee, they actually were able to get some additional positions approved for right now to help deal with the class sizes. You know, I think, I don't know many people know this, Sean, government principal is actually teaching a class this year. Probably not the best use of the principal's time because of class size issues. So that's I think the good news. I think, you know, the other good news is I think over time is, you know, if the enrollment does go down, it does actually provide more opportunity to actually do more, move more things even at the high school level. Because if you have to stay, assuming you don't cut staff, you're going to have a little smaller staff size so you can allocate resources to additional, you know, additional programs.
That's what I'm saying, assuming, are you, I guess I should say to both of you, are you assuming that you will not cut staff?
Well, I mean, I think it's a long-term, I think right now, essentially if I understand the demographics, the middle school and high school, you know, the middle school still has to have a bit of goals and then you can look at kindergarten for a second, that's where you're trying to see the decline enrollment. So I think it's a, it's not probably a problem for 2016, but you know, probably five or six generations down the road, once the lower population cycle through, then it will become more of an issue.
So the demographics of the town are something that the administration pays very close attention to. And that's a point of discussion often because we often have issues with flat size, right? So we're looking at the ebb and flow, students in and out of another trend. The national trend right now really is that the numbers are going down. And probably that has a lot to do with recession we might have several years ago. So to really answer your question, we have to, we have to be forward-thinking for sure. And, but over the past several years, we have reduced our staff. I think it's by, I don't remember if I recall the exact figures, but I would say about six. But it is something that we watch carefully. Even if we talk in terms of the plans for the elementary schools, we had a full demographic study done. And we are being forward-thinking as best we can because unfortunately, we don't have the crystal ball. But it, but it is something that we as a school committee and that the administration is keeping an eye on, sure.
Jennifer, you're the lady in green, sorry.
Okay, so you're both obviously fully well-educated lawyers and VAs. You've come from interesting corporate backgrounds. What difference, differentiate you from each other?
Sure. So I think there's two things that differentiate me. First, it's my, you know, I think the business background with both the human resources and at Boston Consulting Group is actually a skill set that doesn't exist on the school committee. And when I answer this question, I'm not going to squirm speaking for Carol. I'm going to speak of a holistic five-person school committee because I think that's what's important. What's the portfolio of skill sets on the five-person? Not so much learning this year, but that's a unique skill set. And you know, as I talk about human resources, it can be helpful, you know, not just...
I talk about human resources can be helpful, you know, not just in issues like collective bargaining, but helpful in how do you think about communication, and my boss consulting group experience, I think will particularly helpful as we think about, one of the things that I want to do is build much more, think about a long-term, five- to ten-year plan, and I don't think just capital, I mean, what's our vision of Westwood schools in two thousand and twenty-five, right? Do we want to have more language, you know, start early in the seventh grade, for example? Do we want to, you know, in five years of resources permit that, if we do it like Dover, where they start in the elementary? That's just an example of, of things. The other thing that differentiates me, if we talk a little bit about, is, again, I think it's important that at least one member of the five-person school committee have a child in either the elementary or middle school. Does everyone have to have that? No, but I think it's important that at least one member have that perspective.
So what sets me apart, Carol, for the other two candidates, is that both men, just like to have a little bit, so getting them comes up, so, seriously, that's an important question, and I'll, on my professional skill set, as, as having been an educator and an advocate for many, many years, and my work experience, and in my work experience, I have led many, many collaborative efforts, and I won't get into the details of that now, but certainly you can ask me at any time. My communication skills, my long-term perspective, I think this is important, my long-term perspective of the system, and my ongoing involvement from kindergarten to high school. So I've had kids who've gone through the elementary and the middle school, but I maintain, I have a perspective from that, and I maintain my involvement in K to twelve, pre-K to twelve. And then I would add my collaborative style, that's who I am, and I have a very strong working relationship right now with all seven of our principals, with the integrated preschool director, and with members of the administration, and many people on the staff, because of all the project teams that I've been involved in, and still, and still I'm involved in as a school committee member.
Question over here.
My wife has lived a life since passing, Westwood schools, but I have a granddaughter and I have many friends who are parents and teachers, and one of the biggest contentions in system care, and I was just wondering, you know, does, do the local school committees have any input into whether we have these or not?
So, okay, so, it's an important question, because there are, there's a lot of concern out there about all of these standardized tests, and I will tell you that, from an individual standpoint, that children, parents have the opportunity, if they want to, they can opt out of taking those tests if they disagree with them, I noticed there was a lot, there was a meeting recently about that, first group of Westwood, I think a lot of people are concerned about these tests, however, these tests have, have a purpose, and they are to ensure that the teachers are doing their jobs, and that we as, as a school district are doing our job, and that no one is falling through cracks. So, if we, as a school committee, we could never decide, for example, to say, you know what, we're not doing the AMAS, because you know what it will do, is it will impact our rating as a school district, we are an elite school district here in Westwood, the ratings are one to five, you know, we are, we're number one, we're one of the best districts, so we have to be mindful of that, and we have to maintain a certain percentage of children taking AMAS. Now, know that there is some change going on, and you probably do in these tests, so we, our administration is very attuned with what's going on between the AMAS and the park, and they report to us, and there are decisions that we've made, there've been opportunities, for example, to opt out of a particular park exam that's coming up that was optional, and we said, okay, well, we'll opt, our option is, we're not going to make our kids take it, but for now, AMAS is here, and it's our responsibility to ensure that we maintain our rating in those schools.
I think if the school committee is aware of the teachers and the parents' feelings about it, and, you know, I think there has to be communication.
Absolutely, and communication is key, and we as, as school committee members, perhaps could reach out more on that topic, and, and generate, and help folks understand the reasoning behind it, and the reasoning behind some of our decisions, for sure.
Yeah, so just a few things, I mean, so, look, what I tell everyone is, if you don't like testing or don't like common core, it's a state or federal issue, you know, there's actually been a debate about in November, a proposition, we actually made a common core in Massachusetts, so I would say talk to your parents. Two other things I will say, depending on your point, is that, this is a little bit like consolidation, I've actually talked to a lot of people, I would say, I don't know if I met a teacher or parent that thinks we're testing, they all think we're testing too much, and I would say that, you know, in years, and I think the other thing I worry about, again, at the state level, is the kind of what this does to create distress and hurt the emotional child, the idea of testing kids beginning in third grade is just nuts to me, the third graders, the eight, nine-year-olds are worrying, being stressed out about testing, you know, we wonder why there's been such a rampant increase in the emotional and mental health issues on the community. The final thing I'd say, and Carol mentioned opt-out, I had the privilege of attending yesterday's meeting on the opt-out, that's something actually, because I've talked to a lot of parents, they didn't realize, is that besides tenth grade, which is mandated by the state, parents can actually choose to opt their kids out of actually taking the test, that was something I've been informed about, that's again something we can communicate with more parents.
Okay, maybe one more question for the school committee?
I'm interested in schools, I like it.
Oh, it's a lot of schools. Anybody else?
Do you have an opportunity to do an annual faculty hours meeting to a closing statement?
We, well, we haven't anticipated a closing statement, I think, actually, we have time, why don't you each take a brief one minute, okay, since there's so much of this for schools.
Sean, you are the first.
Why not? So, let me just close, this is, first of all, thank you, this is, I've been excited about this dialogue that we had today. So first, let me just close with kind of why I'm running for school committee, I'm running growing for three reasons. One, it's because I think we need to think about the child, to prepare our kids for life, not just college. I'm also running because I think I can bring the perspective of a father of two girls in the elementary and middle school. And the final reason I'm running is for my two daughters, not just my two daughters, but thirty-two hundred children in Westwood, these are the delight of the love of all our lives, the kids that we tuck in the bed at night, the kids that we drive to sporting events, the kids that we laugh and sometimes cry with, it's for these children, for the legacy, the chance we get back to them, that I'm running for school committee. So I'd appreciate your support on August twenty-sixth, and if you'd like to learn more, I do have a website like they, www.mullenforsc.com, and I'm happy, I have an email address, phone number, I'd happily always talk to more residents about our kids in schools. Thank you for coming back.
So we have an elite school system here in Western, and we're very lucky to have it. If there are things we can do to make it even better, then it is. So, I will continue to leverage the strong working relationships that I talked about with all seven principals and the preschool director and the administration, to help families who have needs and concerns about academic, social, and emotional issues, or any other topic. I will continue to collaborate with teachers and the administrators and my fellow school committee members to ensure that our curriculum and method of teaching and method of instruction exceeds our expectations, and I will connect with all of you Westwood residents, it's so important, because we have to create a vision together for the future of Westwood schools. Let me just tell you, I am passionate about Westwood schools, I have been, I'm excited to be a part of the school committee, I love my role, and I ask for your support, please vote for me on April twenty-sixth, I thank the League of Women Voters, and so, and I thank you all for coming, and special thanks to my husband sitting over there for his support.
Now, go back to the audience.